Mr. Trustee Harris Jones.
Okay, everything's okay.
Trustee Mason.
No, everything's fine.
Trustee Roman.
No question.
Trustee Open.
No questions.
They have a motion to approve all three of those minutes, please. So move.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Hyperman, second by trustee Roman. Roll call, please.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Here.
Trustee Hyperman.
Here.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Roman.
Everybody needs to vote aye or nay, not present.
That's them.
Okay, are you concerned at the beginning again?
Aye.
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 The minutes are approved. Thank you, attorney Cummings. The claims list in the amount of one million ninety-five thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eight cents. Pardon your questions, trustee Harris Jones.
My answers, my questions have been answered.
Trustee Hyperman.
I have no questions.
Trustee Mason.
No questions.
Trustee Roman.
Nothing for me.
Trustee Open.
I have no question.
They have a motion to approve the claims list, please.
So move.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Mason, second by trustee Open. Roll call, please.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyperman.
Aye.
Trustee Mason.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Trustee Open.
Aye.
The claims list is approved. Of that over one million dollar claim was four items comprised the majority of that list. Public Works new radios were one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Our payment to Chicago Heights per water was three hundred and forty thousand dollars. One month's village employee cell insurance, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And our payment to Thorn Creek Sanitary District was eighty-nine thousand dollars. That amounted to eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars or seventy-six percent of that claims list. Hear from the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board on any subject not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
I'm going to introduce myself.
Come, come to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm staff sergeant Jona Alkanaba. I'm the local area first recruiter at Chicago Heights. I just wanted to take some time just to introduce myself. If anyone may be interested or like, I'm here to support. That is part of my mission here for three years. It's just to spread awareness about the Air Force. But that is it. That's all I have. I don't want to take too much time.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, meet your merchants. Ms. Saris, anyone here this evening? This time, I would like a motion to approve Jim Gannon as village treasurer. Jeanette LaPlante to the beautification committee and Bobby Lynch, excuse me, Bobby Lynch to the tree committee. May I have such a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Then moved by trustee Mason, second by trustee Harris Jones. Roll call, please.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyperman.
Aye.
Trustee Mason.
Aye.
Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Trustee Open.
Aye.
The appointments are approved. We'll start off, Mr. Gannon. Jim Gannon is a retired deputy chief of police in Homewood. He's also recently retired from the sheriff's police, Cook County Sheriff's Police. And he's going to enjoy retirement until I called and asked if he would serve as village treasurer. I think everyone in town knows Jim, and thank you for volunteering to do so.
Thank you. Hi, State Trane.
Hi, Jim Gannon.
Having been appointed to.
Having been appointed to.
Position of treasurer for the village of Homewood.
The position of treasurer of the Homewood.
Do you solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of Illinois.
The constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances of Homewood.
And the municipal ordinances of Homewood.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties as treasurer.
The duties as treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Forward, it all, sir.
Thank you.
And to answer the question, we'll be doing mine, actually. See everybody. I got you. It's Jeanette. He's on his name, and Bobby. Come on, Bobby. Please come on out. Beautiful connection and tree committee. Come on out.
Hi, State Trane. I'm from Chicago. Having been appointed to, having been appointed to. Tree committee. Beutification, beautification committee. You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of Illinois.
The constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinances of Homewood.
And the municipal ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duty, my committee duties.
My committee duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thanks.
At this time, we will issue a proclamation to the Homewood Fire Department for fifty years of emergency medical service. Mrs. Thomas.
Whereas, the emergency medical service provided by the village of Homewood Fire Department was established in nineteen seventy-four with the first paramedic call being responded to on November sixteenth, nineteen seventy-four. And whereas, donations totaling more than five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars have been raised for the purchase of the ambulances and medical equipment since the inception of the program. These donations were raised through the leadership of the Homewood Fire Department, the Homewood Chamber of Commerce, and the Homewood Fire Department Association. And whereas, during these fifty years of service, Homewood paramedics and emergency medical technicians have responded to more than sixty-four thousand calls for service. And whereas, the Homewood Fire Department is staffed by paramedics, firefighters, chief, deputy chief, and secretary, and is assisted by the Homewood police officers and econ dispatchers, all of whom are dedicated to save lives and assisting the injured. And whereas, paramedics not only provide emergency medical services to the sick and injured, but also provide public education presentations and participate in a variety of community events. Now therefore, President Hofel and members of the village board do hereby congratulate the Homewood Fire Department and its members past and present on the fiftieth anniversary of their emergency medical service in the village of Homewood.
Chief Robowski.
Okay, good evening. Just gonna take a few minutes of everybody's time here. Got a lot of people back there, and they're all related to the fire department. So I get to meet a lot of people tonight that I'd never got to meet before. As Marilyn stated in the proclamation, this all began fifty years ago, nineteen seventy-four. I was ten. So I'll let you do the math. But we got two of the first three original paramedics here with us tonight, Chip Weiner, Dave Danielson, and Jerry Egendorf is no longer with us, but I know everyone knows his wife and his family, and I believe the family's here as well. But before I have them come up, I want to like Fred, so he goes to say a few words because Fred was, everyone knows instrumental in starting the emergency medical fund back when this all began. I know that you guys bought at least two ambulances out of that fund before they got too expensive. But Fred and his group, up until the fund disbanded a couple of years ago, raised a little over five hundred thousand dollars over that period of time, so feel great. Gratitude to Fred and that group of people who are involved. I worked with him, and he worked with him towards the end of that group, that fund. And it's still funded on a bit of equipment up until the end, so I wanted to turn it over to Fred for a few minutes to say a few words about the beginning and how it all got going.
Part of it was fifty years.
You want to say right there? You can.
Ten years old.
I was ten.
Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's actually been my pleasure over these last fifty years, which is hard to believe, to be able to raise that kind of money with the participation of the village people, all of the residents of Homewood. We started in nineteen seventy-four as a door-to-door fundraising. Chief Klock was the fire chief at the time, and Bill Lasson, senior, was president of the Homewood Chamber of Commerce. And we were only in business two years. And Bill asked me if I would like to run run a campaign to raise money for an ambulance. And at the time, South Island, I think they were the first one in the area, and then I think Harvey was next, and then Homewood was third, as I recall. And I said, oh, sure, why not, you know? So what we did, we had a lot of help from all the groups and organizations in Homewood, churches, clubs, you name it. We made out a list of all these different people, and everybody was assigned a different area within the village. We went door-to-door collecting money. And we did it on, I think the first time we did it two or three days in a row, and then we went back a couple of weeks later. And it's amazing how it's grown ever since. Our first ambulance back in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen seventy-four, cost us sixty-four thousand dollars unequipped. And then we had to raise money to buy all the equipment to put inside of it. And as I recall, that was another sixty-some-odd thousand dollars. But we did it. And that was our first one. And I can't remember how many years later we bought a second. It was a couple of years later. And it's, at the time, home, um, yeah, at the time, paramedic service was free to Homewood residents. And a lot of people didn't, never even knew that. But over the years, it's just grown, grown. And like the village president said, that over the course of time, we raised over five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from donations from people, companies, you name it. We, we actually got a couple of donations from, from people's wills. They left us money. And fire department under their leadership has done a tremendous job with it. You look in the audience, you know, we've got a lot of our fine firefighters and paramedics here. Some of the original guys, which is nice to see them. We all look a little bit different. But it's, it's a great service we provide, and I couldn't be more proud.
And we couldn't be more proud of you for starting it off and doing it. By the way, neither of us had any gray in our hair when that started.
That is true. Yeah, there's a picture of me with, uh, with Siri Burkhart and me and Chief Klock. There's a picture of a thermometer that was mounted out in front. And I, I had dark hair then.
Thank you.
But that's been a while. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'm going to ask Chip and Dave, and I'm also going to ask Greg Nold to come up because he was in tier two of their group. So you guys will step up, please. And Chip's going to say a few words about the first class. Chip, you're the man.
This is very important for me to be here. And I'd like to read something if I can get through it. I did not write it. A paramedic instructor and a friend of mine sent it to me. And there comes a time when you realize you have done more than you're going to do. And you answer your last call. And let the next chapter of your life begin. When that time comes, I hope you understand how profoundly you touched countless lives because of your presence. Magic and grace are in abundance when one person is responsible for the care of another. During the time spent on scene during transportation, there is only one patient and provider. There is no doctor to defer to, no nurse to assist, no holy person to guide the spirit when the battle could not be won. All the frustration that comes with EMS, the sadness and the pain dissipates like morning mist when the sun breaks through. The memories, when given proper time to sort themselves out, without fail, will remind us that because of what we did while answering the call, our lives have meaning and purpose. EMS will survive without us. But we will not have to survive without EMS. It's in our blood, in our memories, and will forever be an enormous part of who we are. And nobody can take that away. I give credit to the gentleman who writes this. He's written some books. He's an EMS guy, Michael Morse, M-O-R-S-E. He has books worth reading. And I have enjoyed very much being one of the first with Homewood. And for ten years. And I then moved to the Ozarks and worked on and created an EMS system down there. And they're proud of what I've done. And it came from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Black and Pink. Homewood's where I started in the EMS and fire department field. And they brought me into starting here. It led me to what I think, though, and these guys will, is the greatest career that you can have. And I retired twenty years ago after thirty years in the fire service, and I thank Homewood for getting me started.
I started as a volunteer firefighter. When Dave and I first got hired, there was no ambulance. There were about two hundred calls a year. And then EMS came. And I worked here for over thirty years. It was a wonderful time, and all those men and women in the back that came after us, just keep going. It is the greatest job in the world. So thank you.
Okay, again, I couldn't say anymore. Again, a lot of folks and their spouses and significant others are here tonight, and they were at dinner this evening, so I thank all of you for attending. Just a couple of quick numbers here. Rescue eleven was the first ambulance, the number of it. Nineteen seventy-four, they ran a hundred and thirty-four calls. We have two ambulances now. Last year, we ran four thousand calls. These percent will be in EMS. So a big difference in fifty years. So the pride and tradition carries on at Homewood. I thank all of you for being here tonight. Fifty years from now, Chief Sly will be making his mark. With him, it's already one hundred years. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
On behalf of the village board, we thank all of you. Thank you. Mrs. Thomas.
Board is asked to waive competitive bidding and accept the lowest quote received from Chicago Lightworks Supply. Authorize the purchase of ten color kinetic lights and one ferrous controller in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand, about twenty-eight dollars. These lights will be installed. These lights will be installed in the alleyway between the Hartford building and its neighbor, the UBS. The lights will offer security for anyone walking between the parking lot and the control. Board is asked to waive competitive bidding due to the inability to identify a vendor that can provide reasonable pricing for the equipment and technical assistance needed for a new uplighting replacement system for the village hall. The twenty-three light system and controller from Chicago Lightworks Supply is replacing an antiquated system. The cost is not to exceed forty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Labor, installation, and electrical work will be performed by employees at Public Works. Board is asked to pass ordinance granting a special use permit for massage therapy use in the B-three general business zoning district for relaxed massage at one eight seven one nine Dixie Highway. Board is asked to pass ordinance MC ten eighty-two, amending the village's zoning ordinance to allow indoor commercial places of assembly as a special use in the M-one zoning district. The board is also asked to revise carpeting requirements for commercial and non-commercial places of assembly and schools. This change will help accommodate a music production facility. The board is asked to pass ordinance M twenty-three oh one, granting a special use permit for the music production facility at one seven eight one one Brett's Drive to be operated as an indoor commercial place of assembly in the M-one zoning district. By approving the variance, the Homewood zoning ordinance, the board is allowing the indoor commercial place of assembly to be located on a local street road. Board is asked to pass resolution R thirty-one ninety-three, supporting a proposed Class Eight classification for certain property owned by Wing Creek LLC within Homewood and East Hazelcrest and within the northeast tax increment redevelopment project area in Homewood and the Halsted Street redevelopment project in East Hazelcrest. The property is at one seven four twenty Halsted Street. Board is asked to pass resolution R thirty-one ninety-four, supporting a Class Eight classification under the Cook County Real Property Assessment Classification Ordinance for real estate at one oh oh five hundred and seventy-fifth Street. The building was formerly occupied by Girl Scouts of America. The board is asked to authorize President Hofel to enter a, into a redevelopment agreement with Steve Philippos, owner of Ford of Homewood, for incentive payments up to two million four hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars to be paid over the remaining twenty-year life of the Ketsi Gateway Tax Increment Financing District for the dealership property at thirty-two thirty-three hundred and eighty-third Street. Board is asked to waive competitive bidding for costs attributable to the emergency needs following the July fifteenth tornado and approve a budget amendment and transfer of sixty-eight thousand sixty dollars and eighty-eight cents from the contingency fund line item to the Public Works Landscape Maintenance Budget. The transfer will cover costs for emergency storm debris removal performed by Winkler Tree and Lawn Care and to rent commercial grade equipment from Steve Piper and Sons to dispose of storm debris. The cost total is not to exceed sixty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents. Board is asked to waive competitive bidding due to utilizing Maing Inc. of Willowbrook, a company currently under contract for traffic and field maintenance, and authorize the payment of twenty-five thousand one hundred and eleven dollars for replacement traffic control handfuls, which are underground vaults that give access to optic cable and utilities. The replacement work is necessary due to heavy road traffic at a hundred and third and Dixie and a hundred and eighty-third and Harwood. The board is asked to pass resolution R thirty-one ninety-five, suspending the operations and dissolving the ECOM emergency telephone system board. ECOM is merging into SouthCom for nine-one-one emergency service.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. As far as items A and B are concerned, Mr. Haney, would you please explain those?
Absolutely. Item A, we have, actually, for both items, we have a unique opportunity to provide more aesthetic lighting, artistic lighting, to two areas. First is the village hall. Village Hall, as you guys know, was built in nineteen thirty-nine. It's not a historic building. We call it a classic building. It's iconic. It's, it's known. It's, it's the gateway from the Metro, Amtrak, and then even from Dixie Highway. So it's our downtown iconic building. In twenty-fourteen, we actually provided lighting. We purchased lighting and did some uplighting for the building. That lighting has since run, run its useful life. So we are in the process now of just kind of replacing the lighting, making it a little bit more robust. So that's the first project. Second project is the alleyway lighting project. Thankfully, the board was able to come out on last Wednesday and see a demonstration of the lighting that we plan to do, more artistic lighting in the alley. We have with us Joel Louth with Chicago Lightwork to kind of answer any questions, to describe the project. We're excited, and if you read the board memo, board, the village staff, we put a lot of hours into bidding this project and to try and find a vendor that could do this project within budget. It was really tough. We received bids from two hundred thousand, anywhere for the village hall, anywhere from two hundred thousand to four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So it took us a while. It took us like nine months to find a vendor who kind of understood the need and understood our, our budget. And both projects are funded with ARPA dollars. So just wanted to be clear with that. This is not necessarily a general fund, property tax-funded venture, but these are ARPA, ARPA dollars. So if anyone has any questions, Joel is here to provide some insight on the type of lighting, scope of lighting.
Why don't you do that now? Tell us what the village hall lighting is going to look like. And we saw a demonstration of the passageway, but you might want to tell the audience what that's going to be like as well.
Sure. Thank you, members of the board and everyone who's participating tonight. My name's Joel Louth. I'm with Chicago Lightworks. We're a lighting agency that represents well over a hundred lines of lighting manufacturers. Tonight, we're talking about two of those lines. One is color kinetics, and the other is Chauvet. Color kinetics actually, interestingly enough, started in nineteen ninety-seven when two Carnegie Mellon students discovered the ability to mix colored LEDs and create colored light. And they, they got, they enjoyed a patent for twenty years on that. And of course, that's now expired and there are, it's opened up an entire arena of color-changing companies. Color kinetics, for that reason, is a leader globally. They have tens of thousands of installations around the world, some of which, the London Eye Ferris wheel is led by color kinetics, the Empire State Building, the San Francisco City Hall in Chicago, Trump Tower, and the spires on Willis Tower are color kinetics. So it's a growing trend for municipalities to want to beautify and bring their constituents down to the downtown area. And we find that when we're able to light up buildings, facades, monuments, bridges, anything along those lines, it just moves people to want to be in the space. And so when you have holidays, to have, you know, Christmas, Halloween, breast cancer awareness. And so, when you have holidays to have, you know, Christmas, Halloween, breast cancer awareness, if the high school wins, you could have the colors of the high school's team. The Bulls win, you can easily go in and access these systems from the cloud. Via a telephone or a system on your desktop. Where you'll be able to immediately change colors. You can then, we can also have as part of this, for the control for the village, you'll have the ability to have ten. Settings where you'll have, maybe on Fourth of July, you want red, white, and blue. In the alley. You can set it up so that you have the color aspect during the beginning and business hours, but at ten o'clock or eleven o'clock, you can convert it all to white light. So, you have security in the alley or on the, you can light this building up beautifully with a warm color of light, of the brick color of this. You know, as we start to, if you put a red color to this brick, or even an amber color, it will, it just will make this building sing. So, it's a great way to bring your structures to life, and I'll tell you. When you do that Hartford building alleyway, it's going to be probably one of the most dynamically lit alleys in the Chicago community. So, that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to the items on the consent agenda? If not board comments, trustee Harris Jones.
I'm going to ask that item C be separated?
All right.
And I have no comments sent in.
No comments.
I had just a couple of questions with the lighting. Did staff by chance reach out to the hotel or the apartments to see how we might be impacted by lights? Seeing that they are much brighter than what we have in the downtown?
No, we didn't. So, we did during the demonstration, we actually, we had an opportunity to kind of walk outside of the alley. And the illumination does not go out, go past the exit and entryway of that alley. So, we were confident that even at its brightest, even with ten lights across that alley, that it wouldn't, it would absolutely not impact anyone in the hotel.
And I also understand that there are five murals that are being reviewed as to which one through the parents commission is going to be chosen. How do we know that that is going to complement?
Want to talk to that one?
Yeah. So, the intention of the alley light project isn't to light up the mural. So, the mural is going to be the focal part during the day, and really, the lights is to illuminate the, you know, the space at night. And so, it isn't to see the mural at night.
But you will be able to see, obviously, it will light the mural at night, but.
Yeah, you don't have to worry about glare like across the street. Because these are down. So, and they'll be angled to illuminate the sidewalk. You're going, because of the spread lens that we have on these fixtures. It spreads the light out so that as they're mounted on the wall, as you saw, you'll illuminate the brickwork on the mounting wall. But it will also fill the sidewalk, and then you'll get some additional illumination up to the, up to the. And actually, you know, if you do go, because I know it was a concern having white light during the old nights, so that you can really have some security. That white light will accentuate you at nighttime viewing of that mural, because that brick is red, so color changing, you know. The white light will really make the video pop.
Okay, thank you.
And with that being said, may I have a motion to approve items A to K with the exception of item C?
So moved.
Can move by trustee Roman, second by trustee, roll call please.
Trustee Harris Jones.
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman.
Aye.
Trustee Mason. Trustee Roman.
Aye.
Trustee Obed.
Aye.
Those items are approved. Mr. Hyferman, with regard to items C.
I don't think that as presented, that it is an appropriate use according to the standards in considering an application. That are set forth by the village and its ordinance, and so, for that reason, I can't support it.
Mr. Cummings, any comment?
No, not other than the board has the final say on special uses. And the board is charged in making that evaluation whether or not any of the, whether or not the project or the most special use meets those particular standards. And I'm not going to read them all to you. They are in the village code, municipal code, but the point, and these are not Homewood standards, these are state standards set by state law.
For the discussion on item C, trustee Harris Jones?
Nothing for me.
I have reviewed that, that use, that particular use for the business. I am not. I don't feel that it truly aligns with the spirit of that community. And for that reason, I decide that I don't think we, I'd like to support it.
Mr. Roman.
I echo the statements of trustee Mason and trustee Hyferman. I just don't, I watched the hearing also, and. And it's not something that I think is great for that neighborhood and our community over there.
Well, I'm kind of at loss for words because I did not look into what was taking place at the zoning meeting as to how to move forward, and this is why I have to ask. Our village attorney, Mr. Cummings, is there any way that we table this or till they give more information, or no? Because I'm worried if what trustee Mason is saying and trustee Hyferman are saying is that it's, that there may be concerns with that. Business and then with the spirit of the community, which we're all here to represent and put forth a president businesses in the community.
Can I make a further comment?
One moment.
Ultimately, the board has the final say. Right. So, the way that I think about it, the way I analyze these things is if it's not so much about the people, it's about the intended use. Okay, so, this is a individually owned property, but if something like, for example, Massage Enview or another national chain came in there, would you view it in the same light as this? Because it's about the use, it's not about the people that are there. The standards that you're talking about, and a couple of them, is there evidence that the special use would cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located? And I think what trustee Hyferman was alluding to the standard seven, will the special use be consistent with the uses. And community character of the neighborhood surrounding the subject property. Those are the penalties. There's no one standard that's controlling, but these are all the standards that are taken into consideration.
I like to say, I carefully studied each question that was asked. I studied the written responses, the staff's. The staff's presentation of the, of their comments. Then additionally, the staff comments, which I thought were respectfully a sort of an embellishment. Of the very poor answers that were given by the applicant in the beginning. Then, when I watched the video. And I saw the applicant, the applicant answered nothing. It was a representative that didn't seem to be. Just seemed to be taking on the project. So, it's a disconnect between so many situations and parties with this, that I just don't feel like it's organized enough to be, to fit into the character of that neighborhood.
To elaborate a moment, when Mr. Cummings said it, according to our zoning ordinance, point seven of the special use specifically says. Will the special use be consistent with the uses and community character of the neighborhood surrounding the subject property, and I think that is key.
The answer, can I give the, the answer, the answer given was, it is not related to other businesses.
The answer by whom?
By the applicant. So, the answer to that question wasn't answering the question that was being asked.
With all that being said.
I'm sorry, can I ask another question? Because I do worry about what attorney Cummings said. In the sense that we are not necessarily approving the applicants. So, are we in any way causing any liability to the village by not, by not. Approving the use? Since we are focused on, because my concerns are the exact same as trustee Hyferman.
Use of a twelve-hour-a-day massage place run by one employee seven days a week, doesn't sound right to me.
I think, no. My crystal ball that I was supposed to get in the lost. It was in that class along with the one for the, the magic wand. But I think that the grounds that are articulated here are sufficient to support your legislative decision. Is what you're doing here. I mean, this is what the board is paid, not very much, but you are. Decisions, and this is one of those calls. And so, I think in that case that your decision would stand up in this situation. But once again, it's not about the people, it's about the use. The options are you approve it, you send it back to the zoning board for further consideration. You also impose additional conditions, or you deny it. Those are the four things that are laid out in municipal code. Those are your options.
Mr. Hyferman, you're going to make one of those motions.
I'm.
Approve, deny?
Well, to deny, but we're asked to approve, so I'm not making that motion.
You can make a motion to deny it.
You make any motion that you like.
Or you don't have to motion it at all?
I would suggest the board would take action.
And I would make a motion to deny the application.
Motion is made to deny this use. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by trustee Hyferman, second by trustee Mason. Roll call please.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye. Aye is to deny it.
Aye to my motion, yes.
Trustee Mason?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
Trustee Obed?
Aye.
The motion to deny is approved. All business. We have. Four ordinances before us, Mr. Cummings.
So, under all business tonight, this is the final step in the step within the new tax increment financing district, it's one eighty-third, it's probably one eighty-third west. Tax increment financing district. This particular process has started earlier this year. What it essentially involves is two things. Number one, the, well, the property involved is the former Brunswick zone. And Big Lots property, and also the property immediately to the east, which is the commonly referred to as the Great American Bayville Plaza or Park West Plaza. Those two parcels originally were in the Kedzie Gateway Tiff, which is also shared by Homewood Ford and some other properties in Duell. Tonight, item twelve A actually takes the two parcels, the Big Lots. Brunswick Zone parcel and the Park West Plaza property out of the Kedzie Gateway Tiff. And then items B, C, and D create a new Tiff in one eighty-third west Tiff, and that would include exclusively just those parcels. So, we're basically realigning the map and creating a new Tiff with those two buildings.
Comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Board comments, trustee Harris Jones?
Nothing for me.
Trustee Hyferman? Trustee Mason?
No comment.
Trustee Roman?
Nothing for me.
Trustee Obed?
All my questions have been answered.
We can do the summary one motion. Yes, may I have a motion to approve ordinance M twenty-three oh two, twenty-three oh three, twenty-three oh four, and twenty-three oh five?
So moved.
Second.
Good move by trustee Mason, second by trustee Harris Jones. Roll call please.
Trustee Harris Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Mason?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
Trustee Obed?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you all. General board discussion, trustee Harris Jones?
Nothing for me. Oh, I enjoyed being invited out to the, Mappus, am I pronouncing? Mappus? Oh, it was excellent. Very informative, so many things that Homewood should be applauded for. We're doing a great job to take care of our citizens. Thank you.
Trustee Hyferman?
I have nothing.
Trustee Mason?
Nothing for me.
Trustee Roman?
Nothing for me.
Trustee Obed?
I just have to echo, thank you so much for the invitation to the open house. I am so much, I did not take the, what's it called, the. Feet path, seat path, I'm sorry, path. Believable, but they have to go through training and so much feminine. So, it was a great opportunity to learn, and I'm once again thankful that it's here in Homewood. But that knowledge and those tools are shared within the twenty-four communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
With all that being said, may I have a motion adjourned, please?
Second.
Can you move by trustee Obed, second by trustee Roman, roll call please?
Trustee Harris Jones, aye. Trustee Hyferman?
Aye.
Trustee Mason?
Aye.
Trustee Roman?
Aye.
Trustee Obed?
Aye.
If stand adjourned, thank you all.
Oh, thank you very much.